Good evening, we're opening the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, September 4th, 2012. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in chapter forty A of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robbers Rules, Roberts Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking notes, minutes. Once the minutes are approved, tape may be taped over. So the first item is our monthly finance update, Patty?
Yeah, the first page is the printout from the town accountant. If you look at the balance at the end, that's the end of fiscal twelve. So June thirtieth of twelve ends fiscal twelve. And then on the sheet that I keep, spreadsheet, on the next two pages is just to show you that I reconciled with her. And then on the following two pages is the new fiscal thirteen where I carried that, hold on, where I carried that number over. So that's our actual balance, that's the number that always gets carried over.
The eleven to seventeen?
Eleven to seventeen eighteen. So that's where we go from here. And the last, since we met last, we had a deposit for twenty-two Pleasant Street, sixty-five Central Street, which is booked tonight, and deposit for Sixnerina Way, which is, I'm going to distribute tonight for October second.
Special permit.
That's it.
Thank you. Second is for office supplies. We need to vote on office supplies that you have or are going to purchase.
Yes.
Is that correct? You want to, uh...
Do we need any explanation on this? We kind of got it all in the email already.
I'm good.
I'm going to move that the board approved spending of up to three hundred twenty-five dollars for office supplies for the zoning clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh yeah, discussion, okay. It passed anyway, but that was for basically to cover.
Yeah, and I'll...
Twelve months, except for things that may come up.
I'm going to get it in lower than that.
All right.
Okay.
Is everybody in favor?
Yeah, everyone approved yes.
Sorry.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth, two thousand twelve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July twelfth.
Second.
Any discussion? Is that correct? Discussion?
You got it.
Disgust.
Consider disgust. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gina?
Aye.
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 Couldn't remember if I'm seeing...
Okay, what do we got now? Annual town report.
Okay, let me catch up to you now. So this is an email from the selectmen's office, from Janet Pantano, just saying that it was due today. So I mailed it out to you, I think last week, I didn't give you much time because I didn't know it was coming. So what it is, is in the next three pages, you'll see what we do every year is list the members, and these are the members for fiscal twelve. So that's why your board members have shifted since June thirtieth with the fees and then the hearings, what they were about, the date, date of decision, and the result. And that's what we do every year. And that was sent over to Mike because it had to be in today.
It's the history of all of our meetings.
Yes, and actually, if you look, if you look, and I should have started it earlier because Mike had mentioned it last year, but for example, if you go to the last one, twelve dash oh six is the last one I can put in for fiscal twelve because the date of the hearing was June, so anything that starts in July should actually be thirteen, will start like thirteen dash oh one. So I'm going to start filing them fiscally now instead of, like this one says twelve oh eight, but I put slash thirteen oh two, so we kind of have two numbers because I forgot to do that.
Easier to reference.
And it's easier when you're doing the town report. And he thought it was a, I guess what everybody's starting to do now.
I have a comment on this in the report.
Yep.
In the most cases here, you have it, but for your own records, to put in whether this was a variance or a special permit, I know we know what that is, but in one place to grant it a special permit with conditions or granted a variant, you know?
You mean where I put, this was a...
Yeah, in some cases...
You want to put it in disposition too?
Well, you put, for example, on, I won't say these three, but eleven dash oh six, for example, on the first page, granted with conditions. There's nothing on here to indicate whether that was, what was granted, a variance or a special permit or what. For, as an example, so you say granted a special permit with conditions, just because there's some...
Well, I can still change this.
Well, there's some requirements in here that, there's different requirements for special permits and variances as far as the annual maintenance, whether or not they go to property or the, you know, ownership, that kind of thing. So granted a special permit or granted a variance or denied a variance or whatever it is would just indicate what it was that we granted. Most of them have them.
Yeah, and I just don't have...
In the purpose, but that kind of, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'll double check it.
It's a simple thing, but it would make a difference.
I can still make some changes, so I'll make those, I'll make those and give them to Mike.
Is this report made, well, it's obviously public, but is it part of the town?
It goes in a booklet, annual town report.
Right, okay, and everyone gets a copy of that?
Well, you used to, you used to get mail to everybody's house, but that hasn't happened for years.
So it's online?
I think they just put it online.
Yeah.
So I will check all those and then I'll resend it to Mike. Thanks, Jeff.
And in some cases too, they apply for one or the other, and you don't know exactly what we moved on, so.
Correspondence?
Yeah, we'll move on, we can, I'm assuming we can skip the first two items, which are denials because they are actually in the...
Those are for tonight.
In our packets, right. Do we need to, we don't need to read those, right?
Nope, no, this one is Sixnerina Way, and actually, I can give you these now. I want to take one and pass it down.
Sixnerina Way.
This is for a...
Wow. We asked him to give us a little more information.
It's two applications in one.
This is the application that came to us before, correct?
Right.
And was incomplete, okay.
Yeah, he just, they just, Millennium had to redo it. So, because they originally just filed a special permit for water resource and they needed it actually, the addition is for maintenance and storage of like six vehicles, and anything over two vehicles in the definitions is transport terminal. So they need a special permit for transport terminal and a special permit for water resource. So that's why there's two applications and he just put it all together and bound it.
Okay.
That's for the second number, October, the legal ad we did, and the notice is there.
Okay.
The memo, this is just a memo I distributed for that hearing, and I usually do this on all hearings, but especially water resource because in the back, last page of the water resource application, there is a list of departments that you have to, that have to be copied on it, like the fire chief, the hazardous waste coordinator, the board of health, everybody on here. So I asked them to get back to us by September seventeenth.
Yep.
Okay. This is just correspondence, it was a site plan approval from the planning board for one sixty-one West Main Street.
Hey Patty?
Yes.
Just a quick note, it's one of six, but it jumps to three of six, it jumps to five of six.
It's double sided.
Okay, not here.
Can you keep that one? It's double sided, I don't know, they were, it was a mix-up with a couple of those too.
Are those the double sided?
Yeah, it was double sided, I just saw that.
Yeah, all right. Is this the actual original here?
Yeah.
You want to just make up?
No, no, that's, I have another copy.
Oh, okay.
I have another copy, you can keep that. But what happened was, there was two site plan approvals, it was eleven Motel Way and one sixty-one. And when they got, when they copied them, they got mixed together, so then I didn't realize they were double sided, thanks. And this is just a communication from Coughlin Environmental for the notice of intent for the culvert, the upgrade over at West Street. It's a really large packet, so I just gave you kind of the cover page, and it's downstairs, it's like, it's huge, it's this big with plans and everything.
Thanks for my bringing that.
So if anybody wants to look at them, they're in the office. The next thing is, this was a, an email from, about the pictometry. They did the flyover in April, and they're going to start holding classes in fall, but it's done online now. For example, I have, I get pictometry on my computer from the server, from Merrimack Valley Planning.
That's just going to download right now?
And I, which I can't, well, no, now they're going to start doing it, it's going to be an online program, which I tried to open, Merrimack Valley sent me a link and I couldn't even, couldn't get it, so...
Shall we do that?
So we'll have new photos.
Online and take the training class on it?
Well, yeah, I think, I think you have to be in the building to look at it.
Oh.
To have it, I'm not sure yet, I have to ask Gerard.
Oh.
I'm not sure, because it's only on, that's on the planning computer, it's on my computer, beyond conservation and building. And, well, board of health and assessors uses it too. Assessors uses it to do about his lists and the board of health.
So you're going to be taking this class? You will be?
Well, I've taken pictometry classes for a while now, so this is a different, completely different way, it's an online program, so, and I guess it does a lot more. I couldn't open it, so.
Of course not.
And then I contacted Alan McIntosh, who was, I don't know if you guys remember going to some of those classes at Merrimack, at Mecca, I think it was at?
Yeah, it's close, although this is not...
Yeah, these are separate classes, because remember they had those four classes you could take? So there's October twenty-fifth, roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning, and then special permits and variances, so if you're interested, they're going to be held at the Merrimack Valley offices, which is...
You guys done those before?
I've taken one at...
This one would be good, it's right up the street, if you haven't taken that, November fourteenth, one especially.
I think they...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good one to, I don't have to let them know right now, but...
If anyone's interested.
Two hours, oh, that's a Wednesday night, it's right in downtown Haverhill.
It's right on Main Street.
Right up the road from the DMV, I think, something like...
Yeah, when you go to the courthouse, I think it's right around the corner.
It's well worth it.
I remember it.
Doesn't say how much they are, but usually what, fifty bucks or something like that?
Actually, I think they were, this is going back a while now, it was, I remember them being thirty bucks.
This is a two-hour session, it's probably not very expensive.
Yeah, I'll find out more about it.
They don't tell you, but the parking's free.
They're going to be sending out a flyer on it, so by next meeting, I need to know.
All right, good.
And it gives you the directions, oh, there's the directions for it right underneath. And, oh, business, I just have your updated contact list.
Hey, I've been waiting for this.
Does anybody need to add a phone number or anything to that? Or is there any changes in your phone numbers or anything?
My work number's not valid.
Okay. That's the six three six?
Correct.
A lot of vacancies there.
Do you want to separate that with another?
No.
Or just use the two?
I'm in two different locations, it's easier to keep at home and stuff.
Okay, so we'll just leave that one, so, okay. Everybody's email's the same, obviously.
Like, I'll go from the side, how do we get more people?
What the selectmen sent them away?
There's a thing on the cable station that's been there, but...
You can tell of anybody that may be interested.
I have two people, I'm...
Call Patty or the selectman?
Trying to.
I approach people all the time. I approach people all the time.
I do too.
I know that I don't have something else about...
I approached him.
We'll talk to Cal, he's a young man, but...
He's a lawyer.
I was going to try and talk to a former...
Works for the DA.
A former chairman.
Real bastard.
Not of this board, a former chairman of ConCon.
Okay, I guess, do you guys mind if we close the business meeting? I think we've covered everything?
Yep.
Sufficiently, we can close the business meeting?
Second.
Discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have to, Chris, we need to take a five-minute recess, please. Second is that Sharon. Benny, good. Hey, Ron.
Okay, we're opening the first hearing of September fourth, two thousand twelve, for a business at twenty-two Pleasant Street. I'll first introduce the members of the board, we have Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, myself, Paul Schilling, the chairman, and Patty Pateri is our clerk. And we'll go ahead and read the legal notice, please.
Legal notice, Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, a public hearing will be held on September fourth, two thousand twelve, at seven thirty in the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor. A petition that has been filed by James H. Roberts, The Clock Folk of New England, Reading, Mass., and owners of twenty-two Pleasant Street, Sandra DeVellis and Helen Margita, for the property located at twenty-two Pleasant Street, located on the Georgetown Assessor's Map eleven A, Lot ninety-five, proposing a retail sales and services use. The proposed use requires a use variance under Mass. General Law forty A, section ten, Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, chapter one sixty-five eighty-four, ZBA File Number twelve oh eight, advertised in the Georgetown Record on eight nine and eight sixteen, two thousand twelve.
Okay, gentlemen, go ahead and... Oh, yes, one quick question, Patty, yes, I'm sorry, is there any previous zoning decisions on this address?
We have an index card and a file from nineteen seventy-five for the owners that are still listed. They got a special permit for an educational facility considered an educational use, which required a special permit in the IRA zone, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. I would like to pass these out, please take one and move it along.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourselves?
Yes, James Roberts here.
I'm David.
My brother David. Hello, my name is James Roberts, and this is my brother David. We want to thank you for allowing us this time to hear our appeal in seeking a variance at twenty-two Pleasant Street for our two-man company, The Clock Folk of New England. Everything has already been presented to you in a packet you have with all the required documents. We want to give you a better insight as to who we are and what our intentions are at this new location. We've been a business professionally as certified master clockmakers for more than thirty-seven years. Originally, twelve years in Wilmington, and for the last twenty-five years, I'm at twenty-eight in Reading Center. We now are forced to leave our location because of major renovations by our landlord, and we desire to purchase our own shop in a friendly rural all-American town as Georgetown. Talking with the residents, we have found no negative reactions at all, only interest in what a unique business this is and how nice it would be to have us locate in Georgetown. In fact, we have four repair jobs offered to us already. Our business comes from folks just like you who wish to have great grandma's clock preserved and put back into the condition it was in the eighteen nineties or earlier. Most of our work comes from Essex and Middlesex counties, of course, but we have also received work from almost all of our fifty states, Europe, Africa, and Asia. Some names that you might recognize to help define us, and we, where do we get our business, are Bentley College, Harvard University, Davenport Foundation, Boston Public Library, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The photos provided here tonight give you an idea of the scope of our in-house restorations. We feel the opportunity to locate Georgetown is a rare one and much more favorable and far less invasive than the alternative businesses that need no variance and cannot be denied a special permit, and ask for your vote in our favor so that we may have the privilege to establish ourselves in this great community. Respectfully submitted, James and David Roberts, The Clock Folk of New England.
See, what you're looking at there, those last things that were passed out, is before and after shots, it gives you a general idea of some of the, some of the work we do, what it looked like before and then after it was finished. And on the first page is a list of some of the butters. We could have gotten more, but the people simply went home.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Of these correspondence, Patty, I have a quick question. There's a general letter here of August first, two thousand twelve, which basically gives us the parameters again of what they've already described. Do I need to read that again, correspondence?
What is it that you're looking at?
It's, it comes from these guys, The Clock Folk of New England.
That's just part of their application.
Okay, so we don't even need to...
It's just a description of...
All right, great.
What they do and...
Great.
That doesn't, it's not new correspondence, no.
There's no other correspondence, okay.
No new correspondence.
Is it necessary to read the fact that they are representing the actual owners? There's a...
There's a letter of authorization in there from the owners for Jim to go for, you know, there's a contingency that, so that's signed by the owners.
Okay. We've got all that covered. I'm going to let people from the audience, it's now time for anyone who wants to come up to the podium, introduce themselves and give us a little bit of feedback on this proposal here.
Just have them come up and stand up if they know, so I can hear them.
Yeah, knows what to do.
Pleasant Street. I'd like to hear the case made for a variance here. I heard what they do and what a nice business they run, but I haven't heard any case for the variance. So they're applying for a variance and they've not made one statement of what should allow them to have a variance on that piece of property. So I'd like to have the ability to come back and reply to that, but I'd like the case made for a variance before we move any further. I thought the board would ask some of those questions first, but you haven't. So if I could hear that, then we could go from there. That's all right. Is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, what John's getting at is there's some unique conditions, the soil conditions shape topography of a lot that has to create a hardship for you that's unique to this lot relative to other lots in the district. So those circumstances contributing to the hardship have got to be substantiated as part of the variance. And obviously, there's some other issues as well that the board would have to grant the variance that would not, in doing so, would not derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw and desirable relief or literal enforcement would not involve substantial hardship, financial and otherwise. So, you know, I'm assuming you guys have read through the requirements and can kind of address that. And that's what John's getting at. And also, a little more description, I think, of what your proposal consists of. In other words, you're doing renovations. Is this also a retail shop? Are you selling clocks out of here? I mean, what's, can you describe a little bit more about what it is that you plan to do?
The retail is about 5% of the business. We don't count on it. It's nice if it comes in, but we're not looking for it. The bulk of the business, and always has been, is the restoration's preservation, repair, whatever level of reconditioning it might need. What other questions you have?
Well, we need, as John said, we'd like to understand the case for granting a variance. There's some very specific hurdles that need to be met for this board to find.
Okay, well, there's no topography problems. That obviously doesn't come into it. You know, swamp or peat or anything like that. We can't claim anything like that. There's obviously nothing like that. The only, whether it's a proper definition of a hardship or not, the only hardship might be the two ladies that are trying to sell it to us. They've been owning the building for some, almost 40 years, and I think it's going to be a tremendous hardship if they don't have somebody like us buy it. We don't want to buy it if we don't get a variance. That's because it's going to be very difficult for them to find somebody to go in there that's not going to need a variance, such as a school, which was there before, a medical office, a church, and so forth. But there are only about four or five options. Home is not really an option too well because the realtor has already shown it to two different people, contractors that had considered turning it into a home, and they just throw their hands up and say, "It's too much work. I'll never get my money back." So home is not even an option within practical financial use. The others are going to be very difficult to come by. If they're lucky enough to have somebody come in and say, "Oh, yeah, we want a school here, a medical office, senior center." They're very lucky, but they know they'd be lucky. And so the hardship, if it's the right definition of a hardship, would be that it's going to be very difficult for them to not be able to, to be able to sell this, this building and have it used by somebody other than a small business like myself. That would be the only thing I could really find is maybe is a hardship. We have no, I don't believe we have any other particular, as the plan says, things that would fall in line with reason for granting a variance.
I've been by the property and agree completely with what you're saying as far as it's a unique structure on a residential lot. And it's being used under a special permit for an educational use, which is allowed under a special permit, not a variance. Two very, very different things. There are other uses, as you pointed out, allowed in the bylaw in this district under special, with a special permit. Retail use clearly requires a variance here. A variance requires a much higher hurdle to be met. And the hardship has to relate to the lot, the soil conditions, shape or topography of the lot. And not only do those circumstances have to contribute to a hardship, but those circumstances have to be unique to that lot relative to other lots in the district. So I'm just kind of stating the facts that we have to find in order to get to a level of a variance. I agree that that structure is, I haven't been inside it, but my understanding is it's not really laid out as a residence. Someone who's going to purchase that is going to probably either have to ask for a special permit to, or could continue the use as an educational facility or several other potential uses that are allowed, you know, in the district. It's an interesting situation for sure from that standpoint. What you're referring to is the fact that someone, if they're to buy this as a residence, would have to invest substantial dollars to rebuild that structure suitable for a residence.
Yes, that's what I was doing.
I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Precisely.
Yeah, agreed. But that's, that's up to the current owner to determine. This board is looking specifically at whether or not this particular request of use, which is clearly retail, clearly not allowed in the RA District, whether or not the threshold for granting a variance is met. So that's what we're getting at. But I'd like to hear from some of the other board members, maybe some questions, or maybe you want to go back to the audience as far as getting other comments, so.
Ladies, anything, thoughts?
What's the basis for the retail? Is that typically walk-ins, customers who have already done business with you when they're bringing something in or picking something up, or is there advertising involved?
Well, there's some advertising involved naturally. We have a website. We are in the phone book. People who have been with us before have word of mouth, which is our best, best form of advertising. The basis for our, what was it?
The retail, the retail sales.
That's, that's very minimal.
You say you do, what, 5% of your business is in retail?
If that, if that. When we have someone who comes in, we're lucky if we get six people a day, and usually one of them is the mailman. It's, it's very slow. But if we get two jobs a week, we keep busy. It doesn't take, you know, it doesn't take a half a dozen a day to keep us swamped. Because if you're doing a full job, it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. You can't just whip it out in an hour.
The pictures are the intricacy of your work.
Yeah, it gives you the idea. It's not something you just do in a day or so. It's a very low-impact business. Like Brother said, you know, we don't get that many people coming by here. It'll change drastically from what it is now or was two months ago.
So if retail sales really isn't, I guess I'm, I'm thinking if retail, when I think of retail, I think of a storefront. You come in and out. And if that's not really what you are, then I'm not sure if this is, should be submitted as a variance for retail sales. That's, that's the part that I'm kind of misfiring on.
That's right. Every time anybody thinks of retail, they think of a store. They think of Walmart. They think of CVS. You wouldn't even know that we, in our present location, you wouldn't even know we sell clocks. People come in and they, they see the clocks at that point. They come in with a repair, but they don't know that we, we sell them, unless they've read the ad in the phone book or something. And then they'll call us up and do have so-and-so. It is not what we concentrate on. It's not what we want to concentrate on. Quite frankly, the sales is not the fun part. We enjoy repairing and restorations. Sales is just a nice, easy extra. When we do repairs, it would be foolish for us to not have, let's say if someone comes in and says, "Can I buy you a Chelsea clock for my grandmother here, my grandfather?" Yeah, sure. So we have Chelsea clocks. They were made in Chelsea, Mass., on Everett Avenue. So we do have some, but we don't have, it's not like a Walmart environment.
One of the big challenges for us is once a variance is granted, that continues with the land, not with the owner.
I understand that, but can't you put limitations on it, like with this one-time owner?
No.
Can't?
I don't believe so.
You can't restrict a variance to use, excuse me, to ownership, excuse me.
That's, I think, one of the biggest hurdles for us is exposing that neighborhood to a possibility if something were to happen, or you guys were to move on, that land would be sold with the ability to have a retail spot there, which would be a disaster. The way you guys are set up, it's obviously very harmonious to what's going on in the neighborhood. It's far less traffic than even the library's, you know, doing, but that's one of our problems. And I don't know if anyone is, I'm not exactly sure about home business, but do you, Patty, do you know? Do you have to live in it to be a home business?
You have to live in the primary dwelling and have not more than, I think it's one or two employees.
Well, the retail, the retail use brings along with it signage and all kinds of other things that you guys are obviously going to do.
Yeah, I know, what if you were to forego the retail? I mean, that obviously is for another theory altogether.
You still have to live, you have to live in the primary, in the, you have to live there. Like if I was to work.
Right, yeah, I understand.
You could have a small 12-square-foot sign and like...
So if it really is retail sales is the right...
It has to be because...
That's, that's what I didn't, I wasn't...
I reviewed the application and looked in detail at what you guys do and your website and everything else. I love this business for Georgetown. I think it would be perfect, perfect for this town. Unfortunately, in this space, in this particular location, in this spot, you know, use variances, frankly, are virtually impossible to justify in my mind. If you take the literal interpretation of the law, you know, I can't really imagine a situation where the soil shape or topography of the lot, the soil condition shape or topography of the lot is going to lead to some hardship relative to the use of the lot. I mean, if you were farming and you couldn't use your lot for farming because the soil conditions weren't suitable or something, maybe, you know, and the zoning was such that you had to get some variance to allow some other kind of use there maybe, but, you know, that's, that's where we're stuck on this. In my, in my view, that's where I'm stuck on this. It's not a, it's not a residential use. You're not planning on buying the property, living there, and maybe doing something out of the back of your, you know, garage. You're asking for a storefront, essentially, whether or not you have a couple cars a day or many. It's retail. And, you know, you're going to, you would want signage and you'd want all these other things. And you can't, you know, I look down through this too, because I'm trying to figure out, first of all, there's other locations in town not, that you guys have, it's a long, well, yeah, I know, I know you've been looking. You know, it...
So are you telling me that if we moved out, let's say in two years, and we got the variance, we moved out, a Dunkin' Donuts can move in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, without a drive-through.
Once it's declared retail variance, that lot can now be used for retail use.
You're kidding.
We can put certain conditions on it, but it, it's going to follow the lot for here and ever after. That's why the state law requires that there has to be something so unique about this particular lot, not the ownership. That's why the structure that's there has nothing really to do with this, unfortunately for you. It has to be related to the lot because this is going to be for here and ever after, and three owners from now have got to be able to justify, because of the soil condition shape or topography of the lot, the exact same argument that you're posing today for some other use, whatever that's going to be.
So someone would have to get a variance again?
No, I'm just saying that variance is permanent, so it has to be a lot, a lot issue that justifies this. And that's the way it is. When we talk about dimensional variances, it's really the same thing, but it's a little bit easier to justify in some cases. But a use variance, you're talking about using this particular lot for something other than what the town has declared suitable use. Now, is downtown, you know, the zoning in that particular area hard to understand? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a bit of spot zoning going on in there, and I'm not going to pretend to understand how or why some of that reasoning, you know, came into play when some of these lots were zoned the way they were, particularly right off of the Main Street area where you guys are proposing. The fact of the matter is that it is. And our job here is not to dictate zoning in town by saying, "Okay, this lot, yeah, boy, this is a good idea. Let's essentially make this a retail lot." We don't have the authority to do that. That's, you know, other boards in town may. And a petition to, you could start with the Planning Board as an example, a petition to convert that lot, you know, would be a different avenue, but, you know, this, what's that?
You went over to talk to them.
Yeah, well, okay, so you've, you've already spoken with them. That's a different process. They're creating the zoning. We're interpreting the zoning. And so it's not, in my opinion, it's not for this board to say, "I think they kind of screwed up and that should really be allowed here, so let's grant a variance because we think this is a great idea." That's not what we're authorized to do. We're authorized to hear the argument that says, "Here's the reasons why what we are asking to do are so unique that they require a special variance from the law in our case because, you know, of this problem that we have with this particular property." And I've already probably talked too much, but that's essentially, you know, where we're coming from. And again, I, I think this business is awesome for Georgetown. It would fit right in. They've got some other, we've got some other antique stores in town that would love to have you guys as neighbors, I'm sure, as would a lot of the other business owners in town. And within, you know, a couple hundred yards of what you're, where you're proposing to locate, you know, I can think of half a dozen spots that would be super, all, you know, for you guys to, and you've looked at them. But anyway.
I'll get some audience participation if you choose. Could you please come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Russell Delaney. I own a property in Georgetown since 1964.
Hi, excuse me, can you spell your last name, please, and can I have your address?
D as in David, U L L E A.
And your address?
28 East Broadway.
East Main Street. Oh, we're in Havre. Oh, okay. Thank you.
At this point, all I wanted was a clarification from you. If we back up, I don't know, several minutes, I heard you say that you could, you could put restrictions on, I thought I heard you say that you, that you can grant some sort of a variance with a restriction.
That's correct, yeah.
And could you go into, just for us, the parameters of what you can do?
Well, you can, you can grant variances or special permits with conditions. It's what they're called, conditions. And they can relate to various aspects of the proposal, depending on what it, whatever that proposal is. If we wanted to put a condition on that, that requires site plan approval by the Planning Board, for example, to clarify that. If we wanted to have some screening put in as part of the proposal. For dimensional variances, in some cases, are justified because they may meet most of the requirements, but there may be a view issue that, you know, without planting a certain amount of screening, there would be detrimental effect to a neighbor, so we may require them to put in trees or stone walls or something else that would alleviate, you know, the detrimental nature of the impact. By, by definition, using a lot for an unintended purpose or having a structure on a lot that's non-conforming is by definition detrimental to the butters. So usually, those conditions are put in place under a decision to remove the detrimental nature in some, in some way or eliminate it, if that makes any sense. We may not, we're not allowed under state law to put a condition that limits a variance to ownership. And I'm not an expert on this, but we've been doing this a little while, so.
No other comments from the audience, which is fine, okay. Further discussion from the board?
Just a quick question. Will you provide it with the criteria that allows us, what we're bound by as far as granting the variance?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Provide it with the criteria, the points that we have to abide by. Number one being a hardship.
Yes, rules of procedure and all that.
A little confusing, but yes.
You got that right.
We sat down a couple times as well as with John.
Oh, yeah, Patty's been great.
And I agree with Jeff. I think this would be a wonderful business for the town.
I don't quite understand this gentleman who's just up speaking said... I don't quite understand, this gentleman who's just up speaking said, can you put limitations on it?
Well, we could, there's a difference in the types of conditions we can apply, but it still doesn't override the fact that if it were granted and you decided to sell it, it goes, the retail aspect of it, even though we, you know, you did plantings, you took care of drainage, you limited signage, and all those other things, it still wouldn't prevent a Richdale or a Dunkin' Donuts or somebody coming in saying, it's a retail zone.
These conditions are typically physical in nature, not...
Well, it could be operating hours, it could be lots of things, I mean, but the fact of the matter is, you gotta justify the variance first, and then if there's any limiting conditions that help to alleviate any potential, you know, detrimental nature of that variance, and we would add those in, like operating hours. Somebody might be particularly concerned about noise, for example, so operating hours might be restricted to daylight hours, or whatever the case may be. You know, unfortunately, no matter how you look at it, what you're asking for is a retail use in a residential neighborhood, pure and simple.
I think what we didn't understand was that when it turns retail use, means any kind of retail. Once we're done, which seems funny, but...
And it goes with the land.
Yeah, that's what I understand. Yeah, we were, the understanding that, you know, you could limit it to like a one-time usage or, but apparently not, or, you know, two to five...
Special permits can. If it's were a special permit, which is not something that you would qualify for here, that can be restricted to ownership of the lot.
Oh, that's a little bit more flexible, huh?
And doesn't require a lot hardship relating to the lot. I'm always talking too much in the sports, I'll get somebody else.
I think you explained it pretty well, though.
Got somebody else?
Yes, please come to the podium, whoever wants to speak.
I'm trying to understand this. If you could limit hours of operation, that would seem to me, if, does that travel like the ownership, so that that would always be so?
Would that mean that we could limit the hours of operation, but Dunkin' Donuts could still come in there and operate from seven to six? It would, it could limit the hours, but it doesn't limit the type of retail operation?
Yes, but since they've, they've already told you that five percent of their business is retail, and I think you, it seems to me from listening, I haven't visited the website, but it seems to me that I get the flavor that you believe them. Then if you tell them they can only sell on Wednesday, that's going to presuppose anything that's really onerous coming down the road in the future. Nobody wants to have a business of the kind that's in people's minds as a fearful emporium that operates only one day a week.
I'm not sure, but I think that the new owners of the land would then request a hearing to change the hours of operation.
Could do that.
Which would be appropriate, more appropriate to their business, unfortunately, that's what would happen.
But you, the town would still be in control of that?
No, the board would be. And that's the point. This board is not supposed to be in control of zoning the town and allowing certain uses where they're not otherwise allowed. The town should be in control of that. And that's where I say if you go to the town planner and justify why this particular use would be a really desirable thing to have in this particular place, the other avenue is to go to town meeting and have the people of Georgetown say, yes, this is a good idea. If that's the route that you wanted to go and the planning board supported it and everything else, and let the town people vote that, yeah, you know what, there was an oversight here, or when this, when these lots were laid out and zoned, it's spot zoning down there, there's no doubt about it. You got houses in there, you got retail every which way, it's very confusing. It appears to be somewhat haphazard, although I'm sure there was some reasoning behind it at the time. And it's frustrating. But again, this is a judicial body, not a legislative body. We're not here to say, you know, geez, this use would be good.
I wasn't asking you to step outside your bounds. I was trying to get a handle on what is within your province and what isn't. And I'm...
Are you familiar with the schedule of uses? It's in the bylaw. Our zoning code has a schedule of uses in the back of it. All of the various uses covers everything in town. And it clearly delineates, in this zone, you have the different districts in town, and these are the uses. And I think as you were alluding to earlier, there's only a few things that in RA, other than residential, that you can do with a special permit. There's only a few. Once you go outside of that, a variance is required, unless a special permit is specifically allowed for in the bylaw. And that's the other thing, we can't just say, well, geez, we can make this a special permit, because special permits have to be provided for in the bylaw. And what they're asking for is not something that's specifically allowed for under special permit. Therefore, it's a variance request. And variance requests are really, you know, tough to justify.
I understand that. I was on the Board of Trustees of Kentucky Workshop for thirty years, and I was around when the special permit was granted, and I remember the legal issues and how they were resolved within the town at that time. What I'm asking you is about the present moment. And I would ask you again to be clear about saying, you could grant a variance to these gentlemen and severely restrict their hours of retail operation. And that would be within your province. And at some future time, when they sell that lot of land, as indeed they certainly will, the next people in or thinking about buying it would have to go through a process in the town to change the variance that you would grant with a restriction tonight. Is that true?
That's basically true, but what you're saying is, assuming all these major hurdles have been justified in granting the variance, then this condition over here could be applied. That is true, but you still have to meet the hardship requirement that relates to the soil condition shape or topography of the lot. That's state law. There has to be something about the soil conditions, shape, or topography of that lot that's causing a hardship that necessitates the need to use this lot for something other than what it's allowed to be used for. Therefore, they'd like to use it for retail, okay? Not only that, but the soil condition, shape, or topography circumstances relating to hardship have to be unique to that lot relative to other lots in the district. So if they had ledge there, they'd have to typically, you know, technically you'd have to show that I have ledge and nobody else in my district does, and I'm very unique and I have a real problem here. That's one thing. They'd also have to show that in granting this variance, we're not derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw, which is residential use and all of the associated things that go along with the residential use, traffic, so on and so forth. They'd also have to show that we would not be derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw and not, excuse me, creating substantial hardship, or, what's the third thing? I'm sorry.
Hardship.
Detrimental, can't be detrimental to the neighborhood. So the third thing would be that the requested use would not be detrimental to the neighborhood in any way. Now, we, you know, we have, they have to meet all those three things first, and if the board finds that every one of those has been met to the satisfaction of the board, then we could grant a variance and perhaps apply conditions as needed. But, you know, we haven't even gotten past the first two, you know, first one or two or three of those yet to talk about what conditions may or may not be imposed. So I don't think imposing operating hour conditions resolves the fact that there's been, been no argument made about the hardship issue as an example, so. But what you said is essentially correct.
Paul Inoloro, thirty-eight Sarah J. Circle, April.
I'm sorry, what you asked?
Inoloro, A N U, A L O R O. Thirty-eight Sarah J. Circle, April.
How does a daycare get there, then? How do they?
Educational uses are specifically allowed for in the bylaw with a special permit. It's written right in here.
They got it through the special program?
They got a special permit, that's specifically laid out in here that they're allowed to...
This type of business is about a hundred times less impact around what the, I mean, the daycare's pulling forty cars a day.
That's why these gentlemen may wanna go to the planning board and talk about some sort of changes to that zone. But we can't, we can't change that. Yeah, we agree, we get it. It's a charming little building, a nice little business, but it just is not allowed right now as a retail space.
My understanding was before that it was a local grange, which is why it's shaped the way it was, which is also allowed in that district.
So we should withdraw it?
Could do that, if you want to.
Yes, please, come on up.
Hello, my name's Thomas Wentworth. I reside at Nine Maple Street, which is just across from Lincoln Park from this building. My daughter happened to go to the preschool there. It was a nice historical building, I did hear that it was a grange. Having spoken to quite a few of the abutters in the area, we're very proud of our neighborhood there and its historic, you know, value to the community. It has a lot of really unique old homes that we take great pride in. I think what these gentlemen here are doing, from what I can gather, isn't so much objectional. I think their business, as you had stated, would be very beneficial to Georgetown. I think the problem lies, having spoken to my neighbors, is that if this particular lot is granted retail, and as you said, that cannot be changed in the future, and it's kinda just reiterating what's already been said here, our concern is what's next? What's gonna come in next into our neighborhood? I've lived in Georgetown about five and a half years now, I love the community, I plan on staying here. I have a young daughter, I would like her to stay in the community if she chooses to do so. And it's just, it's the what-if when it comes to the future. It's not so much the objection to what these gentlemen do, but if it requires rezoning for retail, then that becomes an issue for myself as well as some of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're talking about conditions and all that stuff, and I think Jeff had it right. We're well ahead of where we should be. They need to prove soil shape, topography, causing hardship, and there's no other thing you need to get by until you get by that. So I think hearing about hours of operation and trying to condition it going forward for a new owner is really not even worth talking about unless you can get provided first obstacles, and they have to be connected. So it's a difficult obstacle for the applicant, and, you know, I'm an abutter, I don't really have an opinion on it. I think it would be much better for us, but down the road, obviously, it would be a problem if that was zone retail and it became, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or something else. So I think that if the board would focus on, you know, the first set of criteria, we would have a quick decision here. Thank you.
Wanna move on this, or? I do, I just, oh, I'll go ahead.
Tom Mulligan, seventy Beale Life. I actually came to speak in support of this, but having been on the zoning board, to grant a variance, any type of variance is a monumental thing, you have to hit the criteria. And unfortunately, this will not meet that standard. In regards to conditions, you can put conditions on the time and the use, but it's difficult to enforce going forward. So we don't have to scare people with Dunkin' Donuts going in, we never have. You should restrict that on the variance. But I think it's pretty clear that maybe the board should explain the options to the applicant at this point, if you don't mind, what it means by voting on a variance, and if the variance gets shut down, the limitations on them, as opposed to maybe an option of withdrawal.
Exactly.
At this time, just out of courtesy to them, because hopefully if this location doesn't work out for this business, maybe another location in town, because it is ideal. When I did speak to Mr. Roberts, I compared it to the logging company. It's ideal. It's unfortunate because Kentucky preschool has been a very big part of my life. My kids went there, my wife taught there for nine years. It's a white elephant to sell right now, and it's really tough. So it would be great if we can get a business in there, but again, if it requires a variance, it's going to be a monumental task. So I just ask consideration from the board if you can explain their option. Thank you.
Yeah, you could request the board, Tom's getting it, as you can request to withdraw without prejudice, and we could allow that, which means you basically withdraw your application, there's no action by the board. And if we act on it and deny it, you're not allowed to come back to the board for the same use without any substantial change for, is it two years, Patty?
Same thing with a withdrawal, well, a withdrawal without prejudice. Unless there's a substantial change in the application, they can't come back.
Is that for that property alone, only for that property?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, so if they wanted to...
Find another property in town.
Get a special permit or something for another property, they could do it, but...
Oh, yeah, it's just this property.
So the only option then is, well, certainly we can vote on this, or you can withdraw. Or, now, if you really love this building and you really wanna do it, Patty, what, again, are our possibilities? They have to talk to the planning board and discuss?
It would be spot zoning, they would have to, they're not a citizen. I'm thinking of citizens petition, but they're not a citizen. Well, they have, you'd have to be a citizen to do a citizen's...
It's a town meeting, though.
Yeah, it'd have to go to town meeting, but...
I would think they'd wanna add a category in here for clockmaking or antique, you know, use, and then allow it by special permit in this zone, or something along those lines. They'd wanna modify the zoning code to allow a fairly specific type of use in this zone. And then that would have to, if the planning board agrees on all of that, and, you know, you wanna justify that to them, and they'd be certainly willing to hear it, I'm sure.
You'd have to have a hearing for the planning board, it'd be a couple hearings.
They'd have a hearing.
You'd have to go on the warrant for the, whichever town meeting is following that, and it would have to be a two, is it a two-thirds? It'd have to pass town meeting.
That's May.
Annual town meeting is the first Monday in May. But like I said, when we were speaking...
They would probably require a special permit, so then...
Yeah, Howard?
Tony Board, you'd have to come back here for a special permit.
Yeah, I sent you talking about that when you're talking, me and the building inspector, and then you mentioned about changing the zone, and I sent you over to Howard.
Yeah, he didn't think it was a very good idea.
Yeah, he said, go back to the, go back and see Patty.
It's not a quick process by any means, but it's, you know, every once in a while, things come up and mistakes, you know, there's things in here that people don't always agree with, so this is always being changed. Almost every year, there's something in here that gets modified one way or another because they keep...
And if you did it that way, where you added clockmaking for a special permit in a residential zone, then it wouldn't have the danger of it later becoming a retail area. So I think that would probably appease the abutters as well.
Would they need to address the home occupation where it's not owner-occupied?
It would be clockmaking.
Or whatever. I mean, there's several different ways they could do that, but they'd have to specifically allow the type of use that you're asking for, and they may not restrict it just to clock, maybe antique, it may be something.
I don't know how you keep it straight.
It's the planner's job, I'm not the town planner, but...
I don't know how you keep it straight.
You know, I'll jump out there and say, I can't, I cannot vote in favor of this tonight. The thresholds haven't been met in light of, you know, I'm not moving on this yet, but I don't know how some of the other members feel. If you don't feel that this is going to pass, you need, you do need four out of five members to vote yes. If you don't feel it's going to pass, it's to your benefit to withdraw. You can ask the vote, you can ask the board to take a vote, we can do that. But there are, as Mr. Mulligan pointed out, certain things that come into play if we take action and deny the use, so...
It's non-reversible.
You basically can't come back for two years with the same request, which you may not anyway, but...
Yeah, but if we...
Withdraw, there's sort of no harm, no foul, but if you...
If we go with the changing in the zoning, that's gonna be six to eight months, right, at best?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not even sure how, what the process is for that, but if you could make town meeting, that would be great. I don't know if that can happen that fast.
You have to sit with town planner, and they would have to hold, I don't know if it's just one public hearing. There would have to be, anything that goes to, like, any zoning change has to go to the planning board. like, only, any zoning change has to go to the planning board, and they have to hold a public hearing, so.
And that would not be for your particular use. It would be for the change to the bylaws that you're sort of requesting that they make.
If you're requesting to change the use schedule, or you're requesting to change spot zoning, you know, that, that lot, the zone that lot is, you want to change it to CB or CA. What, what's allowed for a retail sale and service?
I think you'd be better off adding, which is CA.
Well, that's up to them. I mean, if they want to make that an art, be your, they want to make that a-
But that's a big, you know, town meeting. Retail's never going to pass, I think.
And we're talking better part of a year.
It's not unlikely.
Not unlikely, yeah. Okay. Let's vote. I think we should withdraw.
Well, I've, I've already indicated where, you know, what I feel.
Yeah, I wish you kind of would, because I think this would be a great business to have in Georgetown, and I would hate to have you, I mean, I don't know if you'll pursue other places, but I would love to have you find a place in Georgetown, because I think it's an awesome business.
There's actually the Eagle Building. On the Eagle Building, it's, um, when you leave here and you go down, um, West Main Street, there's, it's called the Eagle Building. There's a space for lease in there.
Temporary or something.
Lease, yeah.
No leasing.
No leasing?
It's also right on the listed votes ability on the corner of Elm.
Five Elm.
Library.
Oh, these guys are looking all over. I'm sure you guys have, I think these guys have looked everywhere.
That's residential too?
Have you been in that building?
Isn't it a mess?
Well, I was asked to look at it as possibly developing it into something else, but, yeah.
That's a cool little building.
It's a mess.
Yeah.
That's linked with, um, famous property law.
Continue this.
If we're allowed to, we can just speak freely about, I feel like the conditions can't be met for a variance.
Yeah.
And, and based on that alone, I would have to, my vote would have to be in accordance with the conditions of the variance.
But you're not voting yet.
Right.
No, but I guess I'm just-
Trying to tell you that. I don't think you're going to have much luck here. So it would be to your benefit to, to withdraw, but that's, that's-
We should, we should withdraw and be done with it.
Yeah, it's-
It's a wonderful business, and I would love to attend Georgetown, but I think given the parameters of what we're permitted to do, I'm not sure we have much leeway.
Well, to some extent, your hands are tied. I understand.
Yes, thank you. That's exactly right.
I understand.
You love to say yes, trust me.
I'd get a, I'd get a local realtor and, uh, start looking at some more commercial spots in town. Maybe off, maybe off, maybe off, yeah.
Well, this was commercial when it was advertised.
Well, that's another issue.
That's how they advertise it.
Incorrectly.
What happened? Oh, man.
It was advertised as commercial.
That building?
On the internet. That's how we found it in the first place. Commercial property Essex County. Yeah.
Now, I understand.
These, these things happen. We'll withdraw.
Okay.
So, uh, want to make a motion to allow them, like, make a motion to allow them to, uh, withdraw?
You want them to withdraw without prejudice, though.
That's correct.
Correct. Does that mean we get our money back?
No, sorry. Then I don't get paid.
You already spent that.
Okay, um-
The record's got that. You can take it up.
You need a motion to allow the petitioner, not applicant, because it's a variance, to withdraw, and then you're going to sign it.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Discussion?
Oh, I was just asking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no discussion.
Um, the only discussion I have is that, you know, we've already mentioned, I did, it's, I hope you guys can find some place in town. I think it's, I think it's great. I apologize that we can't really help you out.
Talk to the town planner.
But we should probably go on with the vote, but-
Well-
It's a long process.
Yeah, it's a long process, but at least our hands aren't tied. We can do that.
Yeah, that's right.
And if you do the, um, make the clockmaker as a zoning use, just like in the residential area, I think it'll be the easiest way for you to move forward without a lot of conflict.
So that means only a clockmaker could move in there, well, clockmaker-type business.
Or school, or-
Whatever they want to define it.
Any other residential.
Very tightly restricted to only a few uses with a special permit even.
That's a good, safe way to do it. I mean, that's what I'd want to do.
It would be interesting to have that vote in town meeting.
Did we do a complete, finished vote?
No, we have to vote now. We're in, uh, we're in discussion on that, so, um-
Who seconded that?
All those in favor of letting this gentleman withdraw?
I'd say-
I think she should sign it first.
Manamis, thank you very much.
You got to sign, Paul, you got to sign that after he signs it.
Thank you all for your time.
Is I going to file that with the town clerk?
Wish you the best.
I didn't work out.
Thank you.
So I checked without prejudice. Do you have a second one?
Where am I supposed to sign this? With the X's, right? Oh, okay. Should I sign it too?
Who cares, more parents.
Um, I think it's, you know, screaming kids and-
If you think Sandra's going to be a parent.
Chris, can we take a, want to take a break? Oh, is that right?
Do you have Paul sign that? I'm like, holy.
Okay, folks, like to open the, uh, the second hearing of, uh, September fourth, two thousand twelve, for sixty-five Central Street, uh, for a driving school. Like to introduce the members, first of all, and then we'll discuss this, what they're applying for here. Uh, we have Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, and myself, Paul, the chilling, the chairman, and our clerk, Patty Pateri. Legal notice, sir.
Okay, legal notice, Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. An application has been made by Old Bash School of Driving, one fifty-four Essex Street, Swampville, Mass. Central Street Plaza Georgetown LLC, Care of Compass Realty Associates LLC, three hundred Trade Center, Suite seven seven zero zero, Woburn. Zero one eight zero one, for the property at sixty-five Central Street, Georgetown, Mass. zero one eight three three, assessment map ten B, Lot four in the CB District, and requires a special permit to lease space in the Central Street Plaza for a private educational use, driving school, under MGL forty-eight nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five dash two, nine, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. A hearing will be held at Georgetown Town Hall, third floor meeting room, Tuesday, September fourth, two thousand twelve, immediately following the he, the first hearing at seven thirty. The ad number was one two seven nine six six one four on the Georgetown Record on eight sixteen through eight twenty-three, two thousand twelve.
Thank you, sir.
That was the best legal ad I have.
We're going to, uh, quick, I just want to make a quick, uh, point that, uh, for a special permit, we need three, three votes on that. Three members to vote positive on it, uh, is it three out of five?
Three out of five.
Permit, yeah. Okay, just so you know how many members you need to have on your side. Uh, go ahead and you can now present your case. I don't know why that's funny.
My name is Edward Oldash. This is my wife, Terry. I'm the owner of Old Bash School of Driving. I've owned Old Bash School of Driving for more than twenty years. However, my wife and I moved here to Georgetown more than eight years ago, and is that at this time, I'm seeking permission to open up a second school at sixty-five Central Street.
Thank you.
So you'll keep the one in Swampville, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason that they need to apply for a special permit at all is because this is for a private educational, uh, business. Just, uh, it doesn't have to be pri, or an educated-
No, it has to be private.
Is it private? Okay.
As opposed to the town.
More to operate a private educational use. Can you tell us a little bit about what you guys are going to be doing there?
Offering classroom instruction and driver education on the road as well here in Georgetown.
And I understand, uh, will you be leaving cars there in the lot, or how do you, how do you do that, as far as the, the driving education?
No, not at this time. We'll be, I'll be taking the same vehicle to my house.
Yeah. I'm not sure that that's, uh, I don't know if there's a parking limitation there. I have no idea in that parking lot.
That's a retail lot, so.
Yeah, it's a big lot.
You're probably even allowed to leave it there, but I'm not sure. So you'd be taking it home with you, so we don't need to be concerned with that at this point.
What, uh, what's the general, it's the size of your, uh, your classes and the fourth, I mean, how many, how many students at a time and all that stuff?
Probably around a dozen students.
Okay. The hours are, when does it be? Probably after school?
Normal business hours.
Okay. When, the classes are typically later in the day, right, after school?
Um, yeah, it depends with the time of the year. Uh, sometimes they might be after school. Uh, sometimes they'd be in the evening, seven PM after dinner, seven to nine.
Or in the summer, maybe, I guess.
In the summertime during the day, yep.
Long time since I took driving class.
Is this separate from driver's ed? Is driver's ed even allowed, even, uh, when we were, when I was growing up, you, the school supplied that as a, as a teaching program? Is that no longer the case?
It's exactly the same, but we're offering-
Yeah, we didn't take private. I took-
Oh, we had private.
Yeah, we had, I had public.
Maybe it just depends on the year.
This is a private, this is a private school.
I was in a buckboard.
Yeah, so whoever's there, they're there. They could be from different towns. It doesn't really matter. It's just private.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I live, um, near the high school, and it appears that there's, um, driving, that the road time, that the pickup and the drop-off is at high school sometimes. That lot is sort of odd in terms of how you enter and exit, and so I guess I would want to hear about how you would keep the drop-offs and the pickups for the road time, sort of safe, because people race in to CVS, which is there, and they're not really paying attention to who is in the lot. I mean, it's a pretty big lot.
Oh, you're saying, talking about parents coming and dropping their kids off?
Yeah, to drop, to, for the road test, um, like if it were in the back part of the lot. I guess I would just want you to think about that, to think about what the traffic is into the lot for the safety of the students, as they're doing the road test part, but that, that part, I'm not, seems pretty easy enough. Does that make sense?
Many driving schools do it that they would have students get picked up either at the school or at the local high school. We, however, do it a little different. We go to the student's residence. We pick them up there.
Oh, so it's not even a problem?
For the driving, for the driving test.
So that way, parents won't have to shuttle their kids to the school or-
Okay, so that one-
But during the classroom sessions, they would, though.
We cater to our students. That's why, that's the difference between the public school system and, and our driving school.
Okay.
But, but for the classroom sessions, though, they would be dropped off by their-
The parents would be dropping them off, yep.
So I think what Sharon's getting at is that entrance into CVS is, is kind of clustered, uh, with cars coming in different directions. So maybe you're suggesting they could encourage parents when they drop their kids off to go around the drive-through, or something like that, and come out the other side, or something.
Well, as a matter of fact, that's, I had worked out with the, the owner that he thought it would be recommended that there's a back entrance where there's also an elevator where the students would get, they're picked up and dropped off, so there's no, no people jumping in or out of cars.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. I would encourage you to take that option.
So you're saying to go around the drive-through for CVS, and back in there, they'd get dropped off and come in?
Directly behind the building, there's a second egress, and that's where I wanted the students to be able to use that door, so that-
I think it would be safer.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sir, question? Just reviewing, uh, the requirements. I don't have any questions.
I guess this is a private educational use. I don't think what the enforcement officers are-
So is that why, would it join, right? Yeah, I, I don't understand why it's, it was denied.